Good afternoon. This is the Thursday, November 5th, 2015 meeting of the Athens City Planning Commission. A quorum has been established, although there is one absentee today, Ms. Bain. Is there anyone who is intending to speak before the commission today? Okay, and just keep your hands up. You solemnly tell the truth or promise to tell the truth to the commission as best you know it? Thank you. Disposition of minutes. Any questions or corrections that we need to be addressing?
I didn't see anything Trump got to make, so I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of 15.
Now, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous with one absentee.
Okay.
There are no cases today. There is communications, however. The Athens Cycle Shop, Columbus Road, Title 41. Mr. Paskey, do you want to introduce that?
Yes, this is just that. This is an introduction to what will be a Title 41. It'll probably come forward in about a month from now for the actual final approvals. One of the things we did talk about briefly was some of the ways to do Title 41, and I'm trying something different this time, and so far it seems to be working. The applicant's given me one set of drawings. I've done my preliminary review. I've sent it forward to Andy to do his Engineering Public Works review, and then I think that gives us plenty of time to have all the corrections done and get it to you, to the Planning Commission, a couple of weeks, or at least more than a week prior to the meeting. So I'm playing with some new ideas here to see if this timeframe works. But in regards to this project, the Athens Cycle Shop is directly across the street, and they were looking to purchase this property and to put their warehouse on it that will do nothing more than house their shipment of incoming product and assemble it at this location. It will be a Title 41. It has been through Wellhead and met their approval because there are no oils or anything being performed on the bikes at this location. This is nothing more than an uncrating, unpacking, assembling process within this building. So preliminarily, from my standpoint, it looks like it meets all the requirements. I had a few notes that they're taking care of, but it's yet to go through the entire review, so it's just an informal introduction today. And David Moran, the architect from RVC, is here to speak to it.
Okay. Care to come up for it? Just come to the podium, please. And then again, if you would, state your name and the company you work for. Thank you.
My name is David Moran, and I work for RVC Architects. And this, yeah, the structure's, it's a wood structure. It's about, it's 11,000 square feet, and it basically is just a small office, bathroom, and a large warehouse space. And they want to deliver their crated containers of four-wheelers and motorcycles and stuff to this space and then distribute it out to their office there or their building across the street, or I think they have an office up in Lancaster too, or business up in Lancaster. So it's been an open site there for quite a while. I drive by it every day, coming and going from work to work, and they want to put this simple wood structure in late this fall.
You said wood structure. This is like a pole building, a warehouse, heated warehouse?
Yes, yes. It's a pole structure.
And this is outside the floodplain, it looks like, right?
Yes.
As I'm seeing.
Yep.
And since it's not retail, it really doesn't require a lot of extra?
Yeah, there's, we're showing a larger parking lot than is required. Actually, there's probably two employees in this building at any one time.
Is there an existing curb cut into the roadway now?
There is not. It's the classic Columbus Road has mishmash of very little curb cut.
Am I looking at two curb cuts here, both sides, one on each side?
The one side is, on the few occasions of deliveries for the loading dock is on that one, the south side, and the other is for employee parking.
That's an elevated loading dock, I assume. Concrete dock?
Well, it's actually a descending, yeah. It descends down where there's a trench drain in it, and so the truck is going to back down to a lower level and load, offload onto the finished floor height.
Okay, so that will be flush with the building slab?
Yes.
So a truck would have to back in from Columbus Road?
Yes. And I drive by every morning at 6:30 in the morning, and I see, obviously, it's a lot easier for them to, all the trucks are servicing a lot of the merchandise and the businesses along Columbus Road, get there before working hours, and they're already probably back sleeping in their trucks after backing into these more difficult sites along Columbus Road.
I just want to avoid having the East State Street mishmash of cut after cut after cut as Columbus Road gets to be developed, which we only anticipate is going to.
I see they have a waste disposal area, I see detail. If this is an unpacking place, I imagine do the?
Lots of cardboard.
Lots of cardboard?
And pallets, yes.
Yeah. Will that space be adequate for all that? I mean, no?
From the program that they?
SD 1-2.
From the program that they submitted to me, that seemed to be, you know, I don't know how, their volume of material, I'm not sure of, but?
When I met with them, I did request that they put that in and then maybe work with Athens Hocking for a cardboard container for recycling purposes.
Yeah, makes sense.
I think that'd be best in the recoverable world that we're attempting to do here, so.
Yeah, I guess my concern is I've seen places where people deliver things and they can get out of hand real quick with piling up, and that's why I was just asking.
Yes.
I'm glad that I see a diagram and a detail in there. I was just wondering, I think a motorcycle, I assume this is motorcycles, right?
Motorcycles and four-wheelers, yeah.
Yeah, so these are fairly large packages, cardboard or not.
Yes.
Well, it looks like where they've got it located, there's plenty of room to?
Expand if needed, yeah.
If we expand, yes.
As long as it doesn't end up in the river, we're good.
Yeah.
Will it go before the tree commission as well?
Yeah.
Looks like it's got tree requirements there done.
Yeah, we've done already those, according to our calculations.
Just need three new trees.
Has Andy reviewed this yet?
No, but I did forward it to him. No, I haven't either. I was waiting on you to give me the revised drawings, and these are the ones?
Yes, they're from these guys, yes.
Okay, but again, this isn't, it's a new process we're trying here, so.
Is this the Shawn Jones property?
No. No, this is, the property's actually owned by Tom Parfitt.
You don't need really to vote on this. This is just, it looks good to me, but, you know.
I would like to evaluate the openings onto the roadway. Do that with?
I indicated the same thing, though.
Yeah.
What type of lighting, at least, on the Columbus Road and where the delivery trucks are going to be made? Because I'm thinking if they're coming in here at night and they're backing up, that people, motorists coming in from one direction or another, probably need some additional lighting there.
Yeah, well, currently, we're just showing wall sconces on the building itself, so we don't have any pole structures at this point that could address that issue.
This is what he means, the walls.
I just didn't know coming out here, though.
I know. I don't think they exist anymore. I've got an ugly cover head. So can we encourage you as well to consider a dual disposal recycling?
Certainly, yeah. I don't think that's a problem. I believe they have one currently over at their other facility.
I think you're right. I think they do.
And a lot of this would be happening there, so it certainly would spread the volumes of material.
I guess, since these are motorcycles, will we have to worry anything about fluids, oils?
I was told no.
No?
They can protect it annually. They are not to be doing any mechanical work or putting the fluids and oils in them at that location. They take it across the street for that. This is strictly for unpackaging and storage.
Just wondered.
Yes.
Could I, you know, just, do you see a need as far as, again, going back to that lighting that's closer to, I know you've got some exterior lighting on the building itself, it looks like, but do you feel as though?
Well, we're sort of limited because of the right-of-way, the road right-of-way, as you can see, is pretty close to the front of our building that we'd have to get, we'd have to address by going off-site, you know, onto the right-of-way. If we wanted to try to put lighting out closer to the street, is that?
Might be a situation where they work out, pay for a light on an AEP pole out at the street.
Yeah.
That might be, and I don't know where the poles are on this.
What about solar lighting?
Sorry?
What about solar lighting on there?
Well. AP doesn't like solar lighting.
They like their lights much better because we pay for them. And in terms of signage, it'd be minimal because it is a warehouse.
Correct.
There's no issue there.
There's no issue, no mercantile businesses going on there.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Let's see, Don Wood, Ford, East State Street, Title 41. Mr. Paskey?
Well, the site plan you have there in front of you is not going to be anywhere near accurate. The building plan will be. Again, this will be a Title 41 as well. We have encountered, they have encountered, Paul and I have worked with them diligently on this, many issues in regards to their lowmar that was filled in the floodway on this property. The site plan does not indicate that exact line, but the parking to the farthest southwest corner and part of the rear corner of the building area is very close. They've come over, so they're going to have to reconfigure the site plan and remove some of the parking to make this work, and they plan on doing that soon, but we thought we'd still introduce the case to you today to let you know that this is coming forward.
Okay, so really concerned it's in the floodway?
It's in the floodway, yes.
Just a portion.
Just a portion, right.
Most of the, most of the site was included with the letter of map amendment. That included the Hoser Clinic and the other structures there. But there's a, there's a few different parts where FEMA did not accept the engineering work that was done back in 2009 as far as the lines that were requested for the floodway removal. So they're going to make a few changes based on meetings we've had and communication they've had with FEMA recently as well.
We have 420, on this plan, we're showing 420 parking spots. We believe that by rotating the building 90 degrees and decreasing the parking down to what Ford requirement is, we can fit about 300 cars on this site, on the approved site.
With this change, would there still be construction in the flood fringe?
No.
No.
Nothing. We're now trying to find out, too, that some of the land is showing that you can build on, is in the ODOT swale from the highways. We're trying to find out, can we put the, can we have a culvert in underneath fill material that still services the bridge embankment areas and yet still you could park? We would never put a building on it, but we might have parking on top of it, so we're investigating that possibility.
Okay.
But a building is well above, you know, we're more than a foot and a half above the 100-foot floodplain.
Right.
It looks like it's 18,000 square feet?
Yes.
As I'm seeing there. Now, this will be mostly showroom or be mechanic?
There'll be showroom and mechanic service area, but we're below the flood, or the head, the deep water head well, whatever that is.
Yeah. Yeah, you're not in a wellhead here.
Yeah, right.
Not in a wellhead, I'm aware of that. I was just thinking in terms of, you know, how much traffic and try to remember, in terms of site orders, this is a B, this is a B3 right now?
Well, the site is actually zone B3, open space, and M. So the way that I'm treating it is everything that was in the lowmar when that was all done was zone B3, so I'm just saying that the area that they're developing in is within the B3.
Okay.
And then everything else, open space, the M zone is not even reachable, and it's in the floodway, so it's not even developable. I think that happened, if you look at the layout, probably before the river was rerouted, or actually before 50 went through. It's the same parcel from the other side of the street that carries on through.
And we use the same access road off like Hoser does, so that one curb cut off of 50 is where we access all these buildings along that stretch.
So, okay. So technically, in terms of signage, it's coming off of East State Street, which has a 100-square-foot sign limitation?
Right there is 50, because it's only two lanes.
That's why I was asking.
Yes.
Essentially, I could see they might need eventually, if they want to go with a bigger sign, imagine 50 square feet would get you seen from the state 53.
Well, the one for the motel was, obviously, they got a variance for its height and everything else here is back. If they wanted to do the same thing here with that height, then they would need a variance, because that thing's probably 100-something foot tall, and it totally allows 40?
45, I think.
Or something like that, yeah.
I guess that's why I'm asking, if this is a Title 41, they'd be stuck until they get a variance for something like that.
Not for the use and everything. They can put forward on that, and then the sign, they can come, they can get a variance for that later if it didn't work what they have to apply for, so.
It's going to be a lot of asphalt.
Yes.
Yeah, stormwater issues.
He's got a pretty good storm plan. I don't know if that has had a chance for?
Well, she wouldn't yet. I mean, because that wouldn't happen until after, when we're in the Title 40, or in the actual review process, after the Title 41 approval.
Site drainage plan, I see, okay.
But they will need to go to shade tree, and somehow they'll have to discuss how that works, because obviously they don't want to put trees on a?
It's a 30-acre piece of property, and 27 acres is in the floodway, so can you, can you put trees in the floodway? No, they're not.
That's a good question. I know the Hocking River Conservative, he doesn't like trees.
No.
He goes impediments, but I don't know if they're actually, this is part of the mani, the?
It's beyond Route 50 Bridge, so it's not part of what's rerouted.
It's not part of the engineered one, so it's not part of the jurisdiction.
Right.
Give it some really nice landscaping to offset all that.
Yeah. Behind the beautiful cars they're trying to sell.
They'd probably load in the ground. Are they moving their entire operations? It looks like they're?
Yes, they're currently leasing. They only lease the property that they're on right now, and he's not willing to put, Ford is demanding these improvements, and he's not willing to put them into, he tried to buy that property, he's looked all over for it, this is the best he can find, and he has to start his facility by January 1st, or he's going to potentially lose his license, his dealership license, so.
I'm told that is a trend. They want larger?
Yep.
And full disclosure, that's where I go, my service.
Right.
So will Charlie force them to put trees on the roof, green roof?
I imagine it'll be some sort of a banking.
Sorry, I don't sort of.
I shouldn't have even said that. Could they, could they do something like what River Park is doing with this new facility as far as the grass that comes out of the?
Well, we counted, when we went out there, I mean, there is, there are cottonwoods, there are sigamores, there's, you know, scrubby maples. We counted at the time, and when we finally lost count, was, we counted 544 trees currently in the floodway.
Yeah.
But we didn't plant them.
Okay.
The seeds have come down the river, or birds have dropped them over the years. This property's been, what, 10 years?
Hello, yeah.
Since it was, well, back in the area you're talking, I don't think anything happened to it.
Anything's happened there.
No. So, so the question is, when do you expect this to come forward?
Well, we're going to immediately, we're going to immediately revise the site plan, and we would like to, whenever John can schedule us, to really do a Title 41.
I had both of these scheduled for what, the first Thursday in December, which is what, the third, whatever that date is.
Okay, just wondered.
If they can get everything into me very quickly.
Yeah. And, yeah, like I said, we're accepting a smaller site, less parking, and if in fact we can, down the road, that some of the other, the clarity and what the elevations really are in that area, then, you know, if he develops another little bit of acreage because it was okay, or if not, then he's content at this size.
Any other questions, comments? Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Next would be the Phase 2 Homestead Court, University of States. Mr. Paskey?
This one is not a case. It will not be a case. I just thought it'd be a good idea to introduce it to the Planning Commission so that they're aware that this is happening. The little package you got in front of you, you can see where the smaller cul-de-sac is. Walnut Court is already built. Homestead Court is the cul-de-sac here that was platted years ago when the rest of the part of Phase 2, when, when the rest of Phase 2 was done, but it was never built. Apparently, the property has recently been purchased, and the developer would like to extend the road, build a cul-de-sac. The drawings have been submitted to Engineering Public Works. I have their comments back. They will be required to obtain a bond, and they will be required to get a high EPA permit. And once we receive those two, then I'll issue the land development permit for them to be underway, but just thought I'd let the Planning Commission be aware that UE continues.
Okay, so.
Will you partner read this, John?
I know, I know.
I see an easement for a gas line. Is that that high-pressure gas line?
It is, yes. It does run through there.
Okay.
Ryan Buckley is here, can answer more about that as far as any questions in regards to it.
Well, I assume those lots are not sellable. You don't want to stick a house on it, right?
Is Walnut Court built out yet?
Yeah.
No.
Just about.
It's got still some empty lots.
The road's built, and probably three-fourths of the lots are built out.
Yeah, there's a few empty ones.
Maybe the ones right here would probably be the ones that are not, but the rest of these are all pretty much done. Maybe one or two back here.
Yeah. Performance bond, you say?
Yes, because the previous one was?
They headed?
Turned in to offset the University of States roadway project with the understanding that the next developer that comes forward would have to have a new roadway maintenance bond so that we get built to specs this time.
Okay. Just wondering.
And they have submitted, this is a pretty extensive set of drawings, I guess, and Andy's office has reviewed them, and they, they give some feedback to Ryan, and that they're aware of them, so.
Do they have an endpoint of Broadmoor here?
I'm sorry?
Have an endpoint?
Yeah.
It's really hard to see on there.
That's okay.
Well, yours are in color.
Oh, yeah. So this is the building that's developing that way, the road, so this is great. She's waiting.
Okay.
The project will basically start at least, at least three months, would be.
Yeah, you have a note here, private roadway to Homestead.
Yeah. Which would be in the roadmap.
So when they stop, they still have three parcels that say they're indicating there will be a private roadway?
Beyond?
Yeah, beyond the end of?
They're not going to develop the roadway beyond to those last couple of parcels.
So this would be about two parcels down from, let me see, where is, where is Homestead Court, right there in aperture?
Here. Homestead takes off right here.
Okay, so you're talking about from here?
Yeah, Broadmoor comes down here.
And then stops.
We're proposing end in the road right here at this, basically.
Okay.
Is this a great, good, good shoot straight?
Okay.
To access this lot, really, you're going to have to put a driveway here anyway. These are just straight down.
Hmm, okay.
They're only real building sites right here.
Okay, and if I remember, are they?
128.
128. Yeah, that's the one, further one over there, right there. Okay, great. Okay, if I remember, this whole portion here, I'm looking at this empty spot, that was Connors, a concept of a bridle path? Is that out of the mix right now, or? Okay.
That's not part of this part.
No, no.
This property is?
That's all you're looking at right there? Okay, great. Okay. Thanks.
Yep.
Phase 2 rolling along.
So processed, John? You think it's not a case to us?
No. Right now, the process is when the bond comes in and the EPA permit comes in, and we'll, I'll attach that with the changes that Andy made, that he required.
We do have a question with Andy's changes. He's requiring ductile iron pipe, and it was, it was originally designed with C900. That's about a $20,000 upgrade to the project. Our question just is, is that enforceable? Because it was originally C900. Everything up there is C900.
Correct.
And I understand the ductile iron.
Yep.
But it's a $20,000 question, so.
Well, I'll get with Andy, but that is his, indeed?
I totally understand. I just?
You know, because they're turned over to us, and then they're up to us for maintenance, and?
Exactly.
I believe that the specs should stand, as he stated, but I can get back to him then.
Okay, that would be great.
You know how we look at that, too, Ryan? You don't have to put sidewalks in. We discussed that, $20,000 benefit, so.
Sidewalks would be nice, though.
Well, Andy and I talked about that, and it is part of the code requirement for subdivisions now, but history has shown that when you put them in prior to construction, and when they start doing the taffs and start doing the construction, and doing the curb cut, they get tore up, and so we just make it so that the homeowner or developer puts them in as they build the houses, not prior to.
Okay.
It seems to work out. Bad part about that is you might have a sidewalk and a piece not a sidewalk, and then a sidewalk as the lots get developed, but to put them in ahead of time, they usually get destroyed.
Yeah, I can understand why that would happen.
Any other questions?
Just a sewer. Did he talk about the sanitary sewer, or their grinders?
He may, let's see.
It's all gravity.
Okay. That'd be good.
Yep. It's all gravity. There's a, there's an existing lift station down in that open space, actually. That's where it all goes.
And that probably will have to be looked at for capacity, I imagine.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Reports from the city planner?
Holy update I have this afternoon. The Armory EPA Phase 2 study is underway right now. They are, they should be taking nine core samples around the perimeter of the building this afternoon to check for any contaminants that may be underneath the surface of the property. Yesterday, they were in the building, took asbestos and lead samples to look at that. They only needed to be in the building about a half hour to identify where everything was, so that was good. Paying close detail to inside the boilers, actually. In the boiler room, in the past, the boiler pipes were identified and already tagged as having asbestos on them, but they were checking inside the boilers, and this afternoon, they're doing the core samples. So that is underway. They plan to have that entire portion of the study, the Phase 2 EPA study, completed by very early December, so we can start working towards a grant to get cleanup funds.
Great, great. Okay.
I don't normally do this, but I will ask you, or at least let you know that Cliff Hamilton, is he not the chair of the Environmental and Sustainability Commission?
He is, yes.
Contacted me today to see if we had the documents from the Bureau of Land Management ready to do the re-infiguration of the Wayne National Forest and hydraulic fracture.
They have a hearing coming up. Discussing that.
Right. I know that there's a hearing, but I haven't seen it.
I was unable to find, when I go to the site, it just states that there's, the study is planned in 2016, so it is interesting that they're holding this public hearing in advance of doing their EA or EIS or, you know. Just wanted to let you know that he's actively seeking, you know, trying to stay on top of that on behalf of the commission.
When is that meeting? Actually, it might be?
I want to say it's the 18th of November?
Of November.
Yeah. Present messenger this past Sunday.
It's an evening meeting, I think, 6:30 PM at the community center.
I think it's 18.
It'll be a crowded room, I imagine.
I think so.
That's all I have this morning.
Mr. Paskey?
The only thing I have is a BZA meeting is next Tuesday evening. We have three cases on the agenda right now, and I apologize, I forgot to bring that with me, I can remember two of them. One of them is a fence in the front yard setback on Briarwood. Another one is the venue on Carpenter is requesting to eliminate five parking spaces to put in their basement area or first quarter-level area to put classes for their daycare or whatever within that space, classrooms.
So is it a parking space of the interior parking spaces?
They have 10 parking spaces total, five inside, five outside, and they're wishing to abandon the five inside for classroom space, so...
Okay, just wondering.
And then the third one, I can't remember, I apologize. I was trying to find this right up to the last minute to make sure I had everything right.
Columbus Road, reuse.
Yes, yes, they're wishing to put some additional storage facilities, and you're only allowed two accessory structures on a site, and they're wishing to put a few more on their property for storage purposes, so sheds or, like those pods, they're wishing to use them on their property, so that's what...
Like free containers or something?
Yeah.
So they want to upgrade that, is that what you're saying?
I don't know.
Okay.
I haven't looked at it depth yet.